We would like to go ahead and open the meeting. You can go ahead, Mr. Clerk. Roll call.
Roll call for the...
September 21st FY '23 Budget Public Hearing. The Honorable Catherine F. Rile, District 1.
Present.
The Honorable Carmelita Gomes, District 2.
Present.
The Honorable Helen Z. Willis, District 3. Helen Willis, District 3. Thank you. The Honorable J.C. Sebastian, District 4. The Honorable Corey A. Reeves, District 5.
Mayor Protem, can I have a point of privilege to explain the absence of many of us that are not there?
One moment. The Honorable Natasha Williams, District 6.
Present.
Thank you.
Thank you. We don't have a quorum in person yet. But we do have three members present, so we can proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Madam Willis, go ahead with your point of privilege.
Hi. Thank you for the residents who are in person or attending virtually. I just want to ask that you all excuse the absence. Us, we are in a training on business. So that is why we are participating with this hearing virtually. Thank you. And the training is a Georgia Municipal Association training.
Right, thank you for that. Mr. Clerk, go ahead and sign the first item.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. The first item is the FY '23 Budget Public Hearing. Did we want to open up the presentation and then have the public hearing?
Yes, presentation.
Okay. So the presentation will be provided by the Finance Director, Karen Slaton Dixon.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Thank you, Mayor Protem and Council. Can you all hear me? Can you all hear me? Okay, all right. Well, today we're here for our FY '23 Proposed Budget Presentation for our second hearing, which is scheduled for 6:00 PM. And so this is our public hearing and our adoption.
Please stand close for taking time to turn.
So on the second page. So state legal requirements according to Georgia Code 36, that's 81. It requires that each municipality is required to adopt and operate under an annual balanced budget for the general fund, each special revenue fund, and each debt service fund. Each municipality is required to adopt and operate on a project length balanced budget for each capital project fund, which is what we're presenting tonight. Each municipality is required to notify the public that the budget proposed is available for a public review and conduct a public hearing at least one week prior to the adoption of the budget resolution ordinance, which we did.
Ms. Dixon, may I interrupt you? Now, since we have the mayor in official in-person form, he can call it ordered so that we want to repeat.
Mr. Mayor, we did a roll call, and since you are present at 6:07, if you could call the meeting to order.
Okay, I'll call the meeting to order. These folks aren't joining us online?
Yes.
I'll call the meeting to order.
All right. And amendments, any increase in appropriation at the legal level of control of the local government, whether accomplished through a change in anticipated revenues in any fund or through a transfer of appropriation among departments, require that approval to come back before the governing authority, which is the council. And so you give a budget in the brief. I just want to go over and let you know that the city has 17 funds totaling $178 million. And you'll see that the general fund is actually 103, 142, 360. Then we have blighted properties at $300,000, confiscated funds at $100,000, E-911 at $1,929,30. We have American Rescue Plan at $5,645,376. We have the Grants Fund at $1 million. We have the Public Art Commission at $150,000. And then transferred to the DDA, which is $150,000. We have the Hotel Motel Fund at $545,600. We have T-Spots at $17,500,000. We have the Capital Grants Fund at $1,118,330. And that's actually our debt service fund for the URA. We have our Capital Projects Fund, which is at $27,877,310. Our URA Fund is at $3,135,68. Solid Waste is at $8,872,000, and that is an enterprise fund. We have the Camera Fund at $4,700,000. And as I noted, that's a new fund for FY '23. We have Wolf Creek at $1 million. Stormwater MS4 at $1,358,272. And so we actually have two proposed new departments in FY '23 budget, and those are the External Affairs Department and the Grants Department. So the FY '23 Proposed Budget for the General Fund under the revenues, we show property tax at $53,180,000, which is a 48.5% of the overall general fund budget. We have motor vehicle at $1,700,000. Franchise fees at $7,100,000. Local option sales tax, which is at $21,500,000, at 19.7%. And I'm noting the percentages because the property tax and the local option sales tax are our number, top two revenue generators for the general fund. We have business and occupational tax at $2,865,000. We have insurance premium tax at $7,127,000. Other taxes at $264,600. License and permits at $2,813,100. We have the IGA revenue, which is $896,664. Fees for services at $889,965. Fines and forfeitures at $700,000. Other revenue at $1,522,800. And then we have budget use of revenues. And here we have $2,745,233. But then that number does go up because of the fact that the general fund actually transferred in about $6.4 million to compensate for other funds like our blighted properties. So the total general fund revenue is $103,142,360. All right. And so in the general fund expenditures, we show a breakdown that our personnel comes in at $58,862,772. Operations, $37,914,828. And this is where I talked about the transfers of $6,364,760. And then our capital projects, which is $27,877,310. And this amount has not been funded, so this amount is not pooled from reserves, which we will, once the budget is approved, go out for funding for that $27 million through some short-term, low-interest-rate loans to cover these capital projects. So we have a total of $131,196,70 in expenditures tied to the general fund. And so I want to note that on our positions, we actually have 594 full-time new positions come in at 89 positions, bringing the total of positions to 683 positions. And so this, and then this sheet here, which is kind of hard to see here, but it shows which departments actually have the new departments or new positions, like in the City Manager, where they're requesting one new position in the... Just going to read across here. The Grants Department, because it is going to be a separate department, one new position. We have the Legal and Law Department, one position. We have Information and Technology, two positions. And then External Affairs, we're having three positions because this is a new department. And for General Services, we have two departments, two positions. Within the Police Department, they're requesting 31 new positions, six positions in the Fire and Rescue Department, seven positions in Public Works. And because Public Works is actually bringing the services that were formerly covered by Jacobs, bringing that in-house. We're having three positions within Solid Waste, because Solid Waste will also be handled by the city under the auspices of the Public Works. We have our Parks and Recreation, 27 positions. And of this 27 new positions, 12 of them will be part-time as requested by council in a formal meeting. We have two in Cultural Affairs, and then two in Code Enforcement, and then one in our Economic and Development Department. So that kind of makes up our 89 new positions. And so here, this is our general fund expenditures by department. You will see we have Legislative, which is $1,753,350. And that is made up of our districts 1 through 7 and our mayor office. The Executive is $4,688,590. And that is made up of our City Managers Office, our City Clerk, and our Legal Department. Then you have Finance at $2,353,200. And that includes our Procurement and Contracts Department. Then we have the new department, Grants Department, at 301,800. Information Technology at $3,892,200. Human Resources at $1,141,950. Risk Management at $2,880,880,000. We have Communications at $1,889,950. External Affairs, a new department, at $392,200. Facilities at $1,756,756,000. General Services at $2,732,900. Municipal Court at $1,119,009,760. Police at $21,487,250. And Fire at $21,231,34. And then we have Public Works at $12,709,226. Parks and Recreation at $6,609,85. Cultural Affairs at $1,486,822. Community Development at $3,248,125. Code Enforcement at $3,308,400. Destination South Fulton, which is Economic Development, at $1,695,492. And then we have Main Street, Red Oak, at 307,950. And then once again, our transfers at $6,364,760. And that brings you to the general fund expenditures of 103, 142, 360. And then here on this side, we have the general fund expenditures. And so this breaks down some of the money that comprised, that made up of the transfers. So we have the blighted properties that actually gets a transfer from the general fund of $300,000. We transfer to E-911, $1,929,30. DDA, $150,000. And then for multiple grant funds, $1 million. And then we have a transfer, we spoke of the capital projects, at $27,877,310. Transfer to the debt service for URA, which is $1,118,330. Our Public Art Commission, which is $150,000, transfer to Stormwater this year is going to be $217,400. And transfer to Wolf Creek, $1 million. And then contingency is $500,000. So that's a total of $34,242,70. And so on our capital projects, we have Parks, requests coming in at $1,698,400. We have Cultural Affairs, request at $205,000. Fire at $8,335,675. Police at $3,728,447. Public Works at $13,909,788. For a total of $27,877,310, with the majority of the capital expenditures going to Public Works at 50%. We have the police at 13%. We have the Cultural Affairs at 1%, and then Parks is at 6%. And so the next couple of sides just break down to show you the different items that have actually been requested on the capital projects here. Just like want to highlight definitely within the Parks and Rec that we've included $1 million to cover any citywide park improvements and any acquisitions that need to take place as it relates to Parks and Recreation. Just kind of general things going into our Cultural Affairs. And then we have $1 million for the fueling station, which is for four pumps. And this is for construction and cost design. Then we have Public Works, and then highlight part of their $12,909,788. A big portion of that is going to be the FIB resurfacing because of the fact that there is not enough funds left in T-Spots to actually cover this particular project. So it's at $4,328,588. I want to highlight that $1,987 is coming in for facilities and site improvements. We have $1,500 also for bridge maintenance, which is actually citywide. So there, those are three high numbers for the Public Works requests. And we'll move into the Fire Department. Their requests, want to highlight a couple of their high numbers. It's going to be a ladder. They're asking for a ladder, which is $1,200,000. The next item would be $1,400,000, which is a fire apparatus replacement. $2 million for to renovate Station 6. And let's see, $2 million there. And so those are three high numbers in the request for the Fire Department. Then we have the Police Department. They have one item here at $2 million, and that is for the Police Department Headquarters Building. So they are asking for $2 million to fund that project. And then here, we're going to go through and with the districts, all of the districts, District 1 through 5 through 6, they all have the same budget dollar amount. Their budget is $209,400. You will see dollar amounts in different areas because in the operating piece of their budget, they are able to move the money around according to how they see fit. So if they want more money in travel, they can put more money in travel. But the bottom line doesn't go over $209,400. When we get down a little bit further in District 7, we'll see that that budget is much less. But we'll go on through and through the districts, because as I say, the districts are all the same, $209,400. So we'll go to where we get to District 7. All right. And so in District 7, we have $169,050 in District 7 because of the fact that seat is actually vacant. And with the person coming, being elected in November, they won't take office until January. So we only budgeted about 75% of their budget to run from January through the end of September. So that's why their budget is less than all the other districts. And then we have the City Clerk's budget at $1,329,440. And I think I have gone through the different budgets, but then I want to highlight that on the mayor's budget... So with the mayor budget, his budget is $327,900. And that is because he actually have two positions in his budget. And his operating budget is actually $70,000 compared to the district's budgets, operating budgets being $60,000. So the mayor does get a little bit higher budget than the districts. So that's the reason for the difference of $327,900. And so I have gone through the departments and actually given what their totals are. So I want to move now to... If you go to the page for me, City Clerk, which says Proposed Budget Things to Know. And this particular document, this presentation is on the city's website as well for review. Okay. And so Things to Know. Wanted to just make, highlight that the milage rate was adopted at $12.899. And property tax is the city's largest revenue generator, with local option sales tax being the second largest. With the annexation of FIB, the tax digest increased by $12.9 million. And as I mentioned, the FY '23 Proposed Budget includes 89 new positions. Capital projects will need a funding source, which we will look at after the fiscal year start. Proposed updated fee schedule will be proposed in November of this year. When the City Manager had requested that it be brought before, for the council, for the budget, well, there are going to be some changes coming through CDRA. So we felt that it would be best just to wait so that you wouldn't adopt the current schedule and then be back in November adopting a new schedule. So that will be brought back before council. Services provided by Jacobs will be brought in-house by Public Works. So that's kind of some of the increase within Public Works. And so, and I wanted to highlight before I get any questions, just kind of highlight a couple of the departments that actually increased. We show where the City Clerk's Department actually increased by 125%. And that's just because of the increase in positions that actually is going in duties that are going over to the City Clerk. Want to highlight also within the Risk Management, their budget actually increased by 164.9%. And this is over the FY '22 budget. And that's just because of the increase in the liability insurance that has come in. In Communications, we have an increase of 157.9%. And that's because of some additional projects and different things that Communication is actually taking on. Want to highlight also Destination South Fulton, which is 155.5. And that is because Old National and Destination South Fulton were rolled into one department. So we don't have the Old National Department any longer. So just wanted to highlight just a few of those. So at this time, be open to any questions.
I'm going to ask, Council, did you want to ask your questions first before we do public comment? Okay, go ahead, Dr. Ralph.
As it relates to the Camera Fund, would that be segregated out to deal with the pedestrian safety funds?
It'll be different. Well, because this is based on the district. So that each district has a dollar amount. And I do apologize that I didn't think to bring that breakdown. I can get that for you, because I do have staff here with me looking for that, what that breakdown is going to consist of.
Okay. And then also for the Public Art Fund, would that be a separate? I know you talked about 17 funds. Is that one of the ones that is now broken out or going forward?
Yes, and the Public Art Fund is already set up there.
Okay.
So yes.
Okay. Another question. Does this, so the IGA revenue, does that only include the City of Atlanta Fire Service? Or is there any other IG revenue in Atlanta?
It's actually, yes, just the City of Atlanta and then the fire that we have.
Do we anticipate a change in that? I know they're building some kind of facility at County Line and Hamilton Road. Do we expect that that's going to continue going forward?
When I checked with Fire Chief Chad Jones, he didn't indicate that that, that was the number he gave me. So he didn't indicate that it was going to change.
Okay. And my final question is, do we have a bond rating? Because I know one of the things you talked about is the need to look at short-term, no-interest loans. And you said you're going to look into that at the beginning of the year. But from what we've done with URA, does that suffice in terms of getting us a rating? Or do we need to do more to establish that?
We'll need to do more, because I had reached out to Ed Wall, our financial advisor, about that. So he had mentioned about making sure that our fund balance, which we're waiting for the FY '21 numbers to come out, so we'll have a general idea of what our fund balance is to make sure that we are set for that process.
And when we talk about the... One of the things, of course, you know, lost is we really don't know what people will spend. And we're also going through a negotiation with the county at this time. I think you said that it was off by $4 million. Is it that it just didn't generate as much as projected? Or is it because that came in later for FIB?
Oh, yes. It actually, because it came in later. We actually got the numbers from the county later, so that's why we had to go out and re-advertise for the milage rate.
Okay. So that impacted. I don't have any additional questions.
All right, thank you. And thank you for keeping us on point with our bond rating. Council McGomes?
Okay. Thank you for your presentation. So I guess one of my questions, and you may have answered this before. So the budget that is proposed in front of us does not include loss at this point in time?
Only, it does include loss at a rate of $21.5 million. But after the first of the year, January, we may have to come back. We may not, because we're not sure. We tried to project at a kind of a conservative level. But, you know, if it comes where we don't get that money, then we'll need to come back and take a look at everything. That's why we're proposing that any of the new positions that the city just hold off and don't hire for those until after January the first, just in case.
And is that the same reason as far as for the capital projects, as far as waiting until the first of the year?
Right. Just so we can, also so we can see what's going to actually roll over into our reserve funds from this fiscal year? Because we may have enough that roll over into the reserve that we may be able to pay for it from the reserve. We're just not sure just yet, until we start doing the audit process.
Okay. The construction of the Fire Training Center that is supposed to be coming off of Cascade Palmetto. Where do, I know I've spoken with the chief in regards to that. Is there money available, or would that come, the funding will come out of the capital projects? For like construction managers and things of that nature?
Right. It is not. Actually spoke with the chief. We had a meeting earlier in the week, and we want to get a meeting with the City Manager, because that project is going to be looking at $44 million.
For the Fire Section?
Right. And that is one reason why we suggested not to do the rollback of the milage rate, because we knew that that project was coming on board. And so we just have a lot of things that's coming down the pipe that's going to require some money. So we don't have that $44 million scheduled. So it's going to have to actually go out and generate some, through some type of funding source. And so that's what we're going to be looking at as well, some type of GFA loan that we can pay back at a short period of time.
Okay. And my last question, just for the edification of the public. Do you have a number of how much we're saving by bringing Jacobs in-house versus continuing to have them outsource?
I don't have that number, but I know...
I don't have that number, but I know Mr. Antonio is here to, to answer that.
Did he leave?
Yeah, he's here.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, and residents of City of South Fulton, uh, City Manager. I would, with regards to your question, I don't have specifically a number. But, uh, because we didn't have the whole certainty of approvals and disapprovals. But the projections looks real good for the city. I think that substantially we'll have, not necessarily savings, but we will be able to do more with the same, uh, contract amount that we had before.
Okay, so what I would like for you to do, if you can provide that number so we can, you know, a lot of residents are kind of feeling uneasy about, um, bringing the services and, not all of them, but some residents are feeling uneasy about bringing Jacobs in-house. So if we could show them the benefit or the cost savings, um, I think that will kind of, um, show the taxpayers that, you know, it's a better option.
Absolutely, um, just, uh, clarification that we're not bringing in-house.
Okay.
It is a hybrid approach. We're bringing, uh, specific services that, uh, we're going straight to the right, uh, sources. So we're going to the middleman. We're going to apply that. So we have, uh, two main, uh, consultant and contractors that are going to be providing to us as we need, as well as we increase some of the, uh, items, uh, some of the personnel and some equipment for the FIB that we've been handling since last year. As well as, uh, as you know, solid waste has been brought up in-house and the specific areas that we brought up in-house. So it's, it is a hybrid approach.
So are those new positions that we all have to wait till January for? Or will they, those position come in after we adopt the budget?
Some of the positions were approved back in mid-year. So we, we already filled most of them.
Okay, okay, well, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
That's all my questions.
I'm going to go right down the list since we're having a hybrid meeting. Councilwoman Willis, did you have questions?
I've already spoken with staff about my questions. I don't have any questions.
All right, thank you. District four, Councilman Sebastian.
After me, just a single point of clarification. Uh, Fire Station six was listed as a renovation. Is that a renovation or is that an expansion? That's all I got.
It actually was a, a renovation.
Renovation.
Right.
District five, Councilman Reeves.
Um, that we have in... Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
That we have in...
Uh, with the capital improvements on the, uh, this does include for the, um, Fire Station on Oakley and Third Street. And, um, we come see for that and we, the, uh, design for the Fire Station sevens.
And I actually only see, uh, Fire Station, um, six in here. I, I don't see any other, uh, facilities noted in his capital request.
Okay.
Mayor, pardon me, did he say cameras? No, the, the Councilmember Reeves, we, I couldn't hear him.
Is that all, Councilman Reeves?
Uh, well, I do have one more request, but this is, uh, for coming out of the media budget. This is to get with, um, uh, Artie Jones, our economic development director, um, finance person Dixon, with staff to look at, uh, to, to promote the sustainable growth, uh, dealing with the budget. And, um, businesses that have been here twenty-plus years, uh, to look at what that would be like if we give them a five-year tax payment. And businesses that are coming in that, if you live here and work here and start business here, look at to your tax payment. But this is going to, I'll be presenting for the media budget.
Budget, so I'm asking, uh, that they come up with that. And a proposal or presentation.
Okay, received.
Thank you, Councilman Reeves. Uh, District six, Councilwoman Williams.
No questions, thank you.
All right, I have a couple of questions, let me just... Okay, um, the, the first question, and I guess this would be for, uh, Mr. Valenzuela, our Public Works Director, as well as Ms. Slaton Dixon. I just want to be clear, whatever money that we need to complete or continue the work of building the sidewalks on Old National between Flat Shoals and one thirty-eight, is that in this budget? And if so, where is that?
Yes, uh, Mr. Mayor, uh, they share, uh, the twenty percent match for the different phases of Old National Highway from Flat Shoals to State Route one thirty-eight is part of the capital under, uh, two thousand twenty-three.
This is, uh, this capital budget on pages eleven through thirteen here? Okay, I do see that. I just want to make sure that all the money that we needed, so our twenty percent match is there. And we have confirmed that it is, the numbers haven't changed from when we did it originally because of inflation or costs of materials or equipment or anything like that?
So we're continuing updating our estimates. We're in the final design. Uh, we requesting, uh, final, uh, design estimate. But the ultimate dollar amount would be once we bid the project out, that's when we'll know what the actual cost will be.
Will we see any shovels in the ground in twenty-three for that?
It is our, uh, absolutely our goal. Our consultants have been, uh, put in notice, all of them. Uh, we're doing everything possible to ensure that that will happen.
Awesome, um, moving on, I have three more areas to cover. Uh, Wolf Creek, I see here in our, um, that we have a million dollars in this budget, but I was looking for more detail about that. My, my first question is really a legal question. Do we own Wolf Creek now, Mr. Hyman, or are we still leasing?
We're still under current lease agreement, which can be extended or ended.
All right, and we, and we haven't, uh, because that ends the thirty-first. Have we, it ends this year. Have we, um, gotten a new one or asked for a renewal or?
The renewal period would be November.
Okay, and then in this, in this, under this million dollars, um, Ms. Slaton Dixon, how much of that is for maintenance and repairs? And how much of it is for like operating expenses? Have we built a budget out that far yet?
No, and that's actually being handled by the, the city manager's office, the special project person. And this million dollars is really kind of a placeholder until all the assessment is, is done because we really don't know exactly what it's going to cost. But then it will be, um, used to take care of operations as needed. I'm not sure, yeah, Karine is not here.
Madam City Manager, did you want to add anything to that?
Yeah, so... So Adlets, uh, was out at the facility last Friday, I believe. And so we are waiting to get our report from their mayor on their assessment of the facility. And then we will know how much we'll need to go towards maintenance. And as soon as I get that from my office, I will make sure that the council gets it. And then we'll be able to know exactly what, out of that one million dollars, will go towards, uh, the actual operating cost.
Awesome, um, I, I, I would just like to make mention that as we are building out the actual operating side, right? The, uh, the operating budget for doing shows and everything, that we, um, consider some, some, that we make some sort of consideration for local vendors and local promoters. We've done a couple of very expensive events at Wolf Creek that haven't been, you know, very well attended. And I think that if we partner with some of the people who have been working in this city and doing events in the city, you know, over the past several years, that they might, they might be able to get us better results for less money. So that's just something to think about. Um, all right, my, my next, um, topic is the retention ponds. Is there money in this budget to do anything with the thirty-three retention ponds that Fulton County or no one has cleaned out for like the past four or five years?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, as part of, uh, our budget contingency, it, it is considered. As soon as, uh, we receive the goal, uh, Public Works will handle it.
Awesome, and then wait, you can stay right there with Ms. Slaton Dixon.
Mayor, can I add to, also to that, that, you know, assuming that the city wants to take over those thirty-three because we are still, uh, you know, our attorney is still working to try to negotiate whether or not that would be Fulton County's responsibility or the city's responsibility?
Right, I, um, and, and I, I hear you as a, should, should we have to do it? I just want to make sure that we have budgeted for it. Someone definitely needs to do it. It's been five years or more since they've been done. And so it's only getting more expensive, um, and more dangerous. Uh, my last question is about the, the, the school zone camera funds. I really gotta be a little assertive about this. This, the ordinance that we passed in twenty-twenty-one created a restricted fund. And I don't see that listed, you know, on that list of funds in page ten. If we followed the ordinance, um, that was passed unanimously, according to page sixty-nine, there's four point seven million dollars in that camera fund. So we should have one point one seven five million in a restricted fund just for speed bumps. When we, or really it's for other, it's for traffic calming measures. But, uh, I, I'm actually working on revising that because what we have found is that out of that, you know, one point one seven five million, about seven hundred and forty thousand dollars of it never made it into the fund. And out of the whole nearly one point two million, there's only been one set of speed bumps installed in the entire city. So like, there's, there's obviously a disconnect from what the legislative intent was and the, um, where we are. But I, I would like to ask, why, why don't we see that restricted fund on page ten where we list all of the funds?
Okay, so I just have the, the camera fund listed there. So I was thinking that the speed bump, traffic calming was a different area. Can you let me know if that's different entirely?
As, as part of the traffic calming program, uh, Public Works put a, a fair, um, system that will allow each district to do different things. And so, um, speed tables or speed bumps, it is part of the traffic calming. Uh, when you do traffic calming, you have design, um, uh, conceptual design, final, final design, and then construction. But we're following, you know, the ordinance. As you mentioned, there are many things in the ordinance that, uh, Public Works is allowed to do, some are not.
Okay, so I hear that. And as I said, we're, we're, uh, I, I'm actually working with some city staff to bring a revision to this traffic calming policy. But again, this, this resolution creates a separate reserved fund. And, and the reason that I'm really harping on this is the, like the blighted property program, you know, these, these were things that were brought to my attention by residents. This is how residents want to see their Public Works dollars spent. And one of the things that I discovered when I became a councilman is that there is, there is never a specific pot of money set aside. And so that's why we created this separate blighted property fund and this separate, um, traffic calming fund because we wanted to make sure the money didn't disappear into the general fund. It didn't get absorbed, which is literally what has happened. Um, and that it rolled over from year to year. So it's, I, I am really going to need to see in this list on page ten, um, with the American Rescue Plans, the Capital Grants Fund, the URA Fund, the Solid Waste Fund, the MS4 Stormwater Fund, and the Blighted Property Fund. I need to see a pedestrian safety fund with one point one seven five million dollars in it. Or one point one seven five million minus those two speed bumps on Gordon Street and the, I think you bought some signs for like a hundred seventy-four thousand. But there should still be like a million dollars left in there.
All right, we'll take care of that.
All right, and then, and then last but not least, with the blighted property fund, we were talking about this earlier, Mr. Adams. We have, and I just, I just want to put it on the record. Um, it's now funded at three hundred thousand dollars a year. But, which is different than what the original legislation in twenty-nineteen was. I think it was like one fifty. And in our muni code, uh, City Attorney Hyman, it states that it's two hundred thousand. But if we're at three hundred thousand now, if you can confirm that with your records, then, um, that should be reflected in our muni code. And the fact that it is a reserved fund should also be reflected in our muni code, um, for both the blighted properties and the, and the, uh, pedestrian safety fund. Those are my comments. Go ahead, Dr. Ralph.
For the benefit of the public, um, can you explain for the public how funds have to be encumbered to roll over or they go back into the general fund? It's not that they're missing, that we need to encumber them because I hear a lot of conversations and I don't want the public to walk out of here not understanding how government money rolls over. You have to encumber the money. So can you walk them through that?
All right, so basically with the, the general fund in specific, that if the funds are not used at the end of the fiscal year, which if not used by, uh, September the thirtieth, they roll over into what is known as fund balance. So the only thing that continues a rollover is going to be your capital projects. Those items are continuous. But with the general fund, it's either those funds are spent and if there's anything left over in excess of revenues over expenditure, it goes into fund balance. So it, so it's not like people can say, okay, I got ten thousand dollars left in my operating budget. I want to carry that over to, to the next year. It's only tied to projects. If a project has not been completed, then those funds can be encumbered and carried forward.
Thank you, so, uh, Mayor, for the benefit again of the public, any funds that we have earmarked for pedestrian safety, at our meeting next week, we need to encumber and roll it over to next year where it goes in that fund balance where the money is gone. So it's not like it disappears, it's just in the fund balance. And I just want the public to say, because they talk about money moving and that's just how government funds operate. So thank you for that clarification.
Thank you for that. I, I do think that it's important to see it, you know, in that list and then have a separate page like we do for all of these others on like what that money was spent on, what those, you know, and what's left in that, but, but definitely. Um, and so if we are voting to, um, we're going to hear public comment before we vote on anything. But, um, if we're voting to approve this budget, can we approve it as amended with the inclusion of this pedestrian safety fund?
Oh, we approve it like it is and then we bring you back an amended, um, budget, which I believe the council did last year in probably October, November.
Oh, yeah, we have a lot.
The, the prior brought back the, the entire budget with the entire new ordinance. We can do that.
Can we approve it today though with the inclusion of the fund? Like, why, why wait?
Because I want to make sure that the one million, one seventy-five is actually... Because I want to make sure that the one million one seventy-five is actually there because you, you gave me that number, but I just want to double check to, to make sure.
Okay.
Can we add a line, though?
Can you add a line?
Even if we don't have a, the number, I think that would address this concern that the funds are segregated.
Well, you can do that, just to say that that will be done without a, a number. Make sure we got the right dollar amount.
Thank you, thank you. All right. And with that, seeing no other hands, I, we're going to get to the best part of the meeting where we hear from our public about how you all want your tax dollars spent. So with that, I'm going to open the public hearing. And, Mr. Clerk, do we have any speakers?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. We actually have five people who signed up to provide live public comment. We've also received some written comments, which were forwarded to you previously. Actually, it's four cards. When I call your name, please come to the center mic. You have two minutes to make your statement. Please state your name, address, and district. Tonight's four speakers are Richard Snellings, Jewel Johnson, Brianna McGeehan, and Naima Gilyard.
Be nice, Mr. Snellings.
All right, my name is Richard Snellings, nineteen eighty Lockover Trail, City of South Fulton, District One. As I was paying my bills today and thinking about this budget hearing, I kept thinking to myself about how I do not have the option to take from Peter, I'm sorry, take from Paul and pay Peter. I have, I have the budget within my man's and make it work. There's no reason why the City of South Fulton should not be expected to do the same while passing expenses on to the taxpayer. I am very well aware that expenses are increasing everywhere. I'm reminded about this every time I look at my city, my city portion of my tax bill, where they increased fourteen hundred dollars over last year. We, the people, are expecting each of our public accountants to stay within their man's means. I like to encourage our officials to use the City of Roswell as an example. They actually lowered their millage rate, effectively reducing property taxes for many homeowners. As I was reviewing the proposed budget, I couldn't help but notice that council budgets are also increasing, in many cases around twenty-five thousand dollars each. If I'm not mistaken, that's around the same amount in totality as those flyers that council has sent out in January that we received but never asked for. In the case of Roswell, they have proven to their residents that they can manage public funds appropriately, offering relief to its residents without the need for frivolous referrals and actions. The only way, the only way the vote on this proposed budget is no. Thank you.
My name is Jewel Johnson, and I live at forty-six sixty Orkney Lane, thus Atlanta. Good evening, Mayor and Council. With the, we, the people of the City of South Fulton have received watered-down budget information. Now you want to implement a budget of what I would call a budget of failure. The people asked for an operational audit, but instead you wanted to contract an internal auditor. This, there is no budget for impact fee, an impact study. You were asked not to implement a one carrier for our trash service. You disrespected the will of the people and embarrassed us and the public. America has no kings or queens. You are only an employee of the people. Change your ways, listen to the people. And I ask tonight that you do not pass this budget. I don't ever remember having a budget hearing and then turn around right off on the, on the second of our first meeting and vote. And I would say, please don't have another budget meeting when some, when some of the other council people are out on training or whatever they're out on. We don't meet in person enough. I'm offended that you did this when you could have changed the date so we would have had everybody in person. Please, respect the people and listen to the people.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Just a point of information, this is actually our third budget hearing. The first two were online, but we did ask to specifically have at least one in-person meeting. But we did have two before that, you can't see them online.
I do have thirty-two minutes. I apologize, I have been under the weather, and I don't get a chance to, to be on all the virtual. That's the reason I'm really talking about in person because we don't do enough to inform the public, which is one of the things that has happened, the reason we look so bad in the public, because it is so obvious that our council is so vain that they feel they're, they're kings and queens, they want to tell us what to do, when they're only an employee of the people. And you must listen to the people.
All right, thank you, Ms. Johnson.
Okay, my name is Brianna McGeehan, I live in District Seven, four six four zero Gordon Street. My comment is, it's actually been addressed, but I'll just add that my community is the only community that's gotten speed bumps through the pedestrian safety fund. And as I've canvassed the city, everyone is talking about speed bumps. And what I'm hearing from people is that even people who have a valid need and there is a safety concern, they're being told that there are no resources for speed bumps. So that's something that we should definitely be addressing and get some traffic calming devices like throughout the city.
Thank you. And last but certainly not least, our councilwoman emeritus.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, we, we had one other card.
One more, okay. Go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor and Council and citizens.
Can you get the mic a little closer to you, please?
You know what's wrong? I need to pull this down, and I really hate doing this.
The mic here just, yeah.
Pull it down. Oh, closer to me. Okay. Well, did you hear me say hello to everybody? Okay. Okay. I was gonna, I, I really was gonna start out by talking about why we became a city, and some of us here worked on that, and we knew that we wanted to get away from Fulton County, we wanted to be our own city, we wanted to do all these wonderful and great things for each other. And we are a little bit five years down the road, and yes, some good things have happened, and some good things, not so good, and then some really bad things. So I wanted to start out by talking about the budget and it being a lot of meat and no potatoes, but I didn't have that presentation, and I didn't know where that presentation was. And I got the presentation off the finance department's website, and it was really kind of bare bones, and I just couldn't believe it. But now I know, and they told me that I'm going to get it. So I have to just jump around this a little, little bit. We do have a budget that increased from a hundred and thirty to a hundred and seventy-two million dollars. That is a lot of money. A lot of money, a lot of activity. But what I want to see is what budgets usually have, and that is a justification and a narrative that is somehow related to a strategy in some way. Now, way back in the past, we did, if you look at earlier ones, we did have budgets like that. And Ms. Slaton, I'm not trying to offend you in any kind of way or say anything about your budget because I think that you did an excellent presentation, okay? But I just want to bring that up. But there are things in that budget that bothers me that we've already talked about. The citizens asked for an operational audit. They asked over and over again. So what do we see in the budget? A contracted line for an internal auditor. That is not what we asked for. I just want to make sure that everybody is clear about that. And as an ex-internal auditor, I'm saying that for a specific reason. A R P funds, American Rescue Money, five million, we don't know what it's for. Infrastructure funds, we don't have a plan. What about broadband? There are just so many things that are not in it, but I clearly see the eight million for solid waste. So I'm concerned about it. I'm concerned about it because I know departments, they submit what their needs are, those needs are reviewed, it changes, it changes, and there's a lot of changes that need to occur with this budget. And I'm sure after I read the presentation, I'll have more comments that I will submit to Mayor and Council. But you know what? It would be a good idea to wait until the twenty-seventh, the meeting of the twenty-seventh, to vote on the budget, to just give it a little bit more time for some additional review. Thank you.
Thank you. Tonight's last speaker is Ms. Ivory M. Denson.
Well, I'll just take it down. Good evening, everyone. It's been a long time since I have attended a council meeting, probably maybe since the beginning of the pandemic.
Excuse me, I said.
And my name is Ivory M. Denson. I live in District Two. My councilwoman is Come and Eat the Gums, but I also interact quite a bit with Councilwoman Rawwell. They are, they have done a fantastic job. It's been a while since I've, I have attended a meeting. As most of us have been plagued by that pandemic, but I'm happy to be here tonight. I am, this past weekend, I saw or received an email that pointed to an interview by the mayor, which was extremely damning, but not, not surprising. Some work for this new city and some opposed it. Opposed it because it is now where I expect it to be. During that time, I asked repeatedly one question. Tell me, please, those who are advocating, one city in America that was predominantly black occupied and was run by black officials? America has a lot of cities. I didn't know a one, and no one could tell me that there was one. And as I speak tonight, there still is not one. The City of South Fulton is run very poorly. The budget reflects more than a thirty percent increase. That is unbelievable. It seems to me that we could be able to run a city more efficiently. I don't understand why it is that we have to pay so much. Maybe it's because the patronage, maybe we feel there are people that we need to hire who are not necessarily the best qualified, but they have connections. Ms. Gilyard, sorry about your defeat because you weren't an asset to this council, in my opinion, when I was coming to all those meetings. I'm asking not for that count, please let me, let me finish, please. I want a forensic, I want a forensic audit to see where every penny has been spent. It is uncontentable that taxes are going up now. Thank God, I'm, I'll be seventy-nine this coming Saturday, twenty-fourth. Thank you. I'm not caught up with what some of the ups, but I remember when I was young, too, and had to pay taxes, and I, and when you got a family, I mean, that can be a tremendous burden. And, and heaven knows, I was hoping so much that the City of South Fulton would be the first one whose occupants are predominantly African-American, whose officials happen to be African-American and was run well. Please, at seventy-nine, I don't have a whole lot of time there. I hope to God Almighty that I will see one well-run city that's run by black people in America. And I hope and pray to God it is the City of South Fulton. Please, let this old soul see that before I leave here. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Denson. Is that, is that it for our public comments?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, that completes the public comment for this evening.
All right, I'm going to go ahead and, well, before I close the public hearing, Madam City Manager, there, there are just some points of clarification. There was a big increase in our budget. A lot of that was A R P funds, there were other things that happened. Could you just talk about how we got from one thirty to one seventy-two?
Yeah, so, well, in regards to A R P, the council approved my recommendation for those projects. They were approved in October of twenty twenty-one. So if you are looking for the A R P list, it is on our city's website. Our city received three point, I'm sorry, eleven point three million dollars, and it goes across from projects related to community outreach, to infrastructure, and in regards to even some projects internally, broadband was also mentioned. In regards to the increase we talked about, you know, we do have eighty-nine new positions that we're bringing on. These are all key positions that will help run the operations of the city. You ask for an efficient government, we're trying to give that to you. Eighty-nine positions may sound like a lot, but relatively speaking, a city of a hundred and eight thousand people, ninety square miles, I do assure you that we do need every single one of these employees that we are asking for. What, what else were you?
Just that twenty-two million dollar increase. So we know that eleven million dollars of it is A R P funds. Some of it is also grants and the blighted.
Right, and Fulton Industrial.
Because you just talked about, because I don't want people to think that we raised taxes to get this larger budget.
Absolutely. You know, the, the council hasn't raised the millage increase, the millage rate, pardon me, since twenty twenty. We've been at twelve point eight nine nine. So I do want to make sure that that's clear, that we did not, this council did not raise the millage rate increase. And yes, some of the increase does have to do with Fulton Industrial Boulevard.
Awesome.
And, and then the, I guess we were in a pand- I don't know if this might be. And the fact that we were in a pandemic when, in twenty twenty, and then in twenty twenty-one, we had some cost savings, so that also impacted a lot of our budget. So now we're growing and we're getting back to the normal operation of business. So I think that's important to also consider as well that we were in a pandemic for two years. Absolutely. So just a little point of order and adding some more context to what we're discussing.
Thank you. All right, with that, I will.
You're about to make one.
Yes, please.
Before you all vote. Because I want to make note to an email where we talked about on the, the traffic common device that it was supposed to be the four point seven million dollars, where twenty-five percent of that, we do have that in, in the budget, and that is what the four point seven million dollars is. It's actually a hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars per district that's been allotted, as well as one million seven sixty-two for the police department, one million seven hundred sixty-two for the, the fire as well. So that, we do have the traffic common options in there for each district.
Awesome. So we just need to, to move them to that line. Thank you. And with that, I'm going to close the public hearing, and I will entertain a motion.
Do you want me to sign the ordinance first?
Yes, please.
For any motion. So ordinance for the fiscal year twenty twenty-three budget for general fund of the City of South Fulton, Georgia, appropriating the amounts showing in each fund as expenditures' expenses, adopting the several items of revenue anticipations, prohibiting expenditures or expenses from exceeding the actual funding available and for other lawful purposes.
All right, I will entertain a motion.
I move that we adopt the budget as sounded.
Friendly amendment. Then we add the pedestrian safety fund, and I'll leave it with no money to it. Is that amount confirmed? Do we, can we use that number, or are you just okay with the name, the line item for the pedestrian safety?
But it's already in the ordinance.
Oh, it is in there, okay.
It's already there.
Okay, so no amendment needed.
I think it's, it's, it's not, it's in the ordinance, but it's, it's not.
So we add the line item.
Yes. It's not a restricted fund.
Yeah, restricted fund with the amount allocated.
Second.
All right, it's been properly moved and seconded. All right, it's been properly moved and seconded. Would you roll call the vote? I'm sorry, any discussion? All right, roll call the vote, please.
Roll call vote to approve the budget as sounded. Councilmember Rawell?
Yes.
Councilmember Gomes?
Yes.
Councilmember Willis? Councilmember Willis?
I had discussion.
Oh, well, I, I'll tell you what I'll do, I'll have closing comments from all of council as soon as we finish this vote, Councilwoman Willis.
Right, but I asked, I said I had discussion before we went into the vote.
I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't hear that you had that, council. Do you have that, Mr. Adams?
I didn't show it in the chat.
Well, we're, we're in the vote now, Councilwoman Willis. Is, is it possible just to vote and give your comments at the end of the meeting?
Yes, she actually did put it.
Okay, she, it says she has discussion in the chat, there you go. All right, give us, give us a minute, we're working these technical difficulties out. Councilwoman Willis, go ahead with your discussion.
Mayor, if you want to just give us, I just wanted to say a thank you to staff for their time and diligence. I mean, many can sit around and criticize and, and many can, can sit around and, and, you know, talk negatively, but I want to say that I have firsthand witnessed staff that are staying up in the wee hours of the evening, late evenings, and getting to work early to get us through this budget process. And I want to thank each of you for taking time and, and meeting with me and addressing my concerns and needs. You know, I know there are some things that we need to continue to work on, but for the most part, I really appreciate your time and all of your efforts. Thank you.
Okay, so we're going to, I got it, Ms. Could, could we have your vote, please, Councilwoman Willis?
Councilmember Willis, we're asking for your vote.
Lot of echoes, with the way that this was set up before, we could hear, but something happened and I can't really hear anything.
If you want to put a, and I will say this for Willis, Sebastian and Reeves, if you want to put your vote in the chat, you can, we have the chat up, we're just asking for the vote to approve this budget with the amendment for the pedestrian safety fund and a restricted fund. I see a yes from all, I see a yes from Sebastian and Willis. Councilman Reeves? While we're waiting for Councilman Reeves, I will just let you all know, we are also going to be updating our voting systems and our clerk systems or be able to vote online. You'll see it on the screen like you do in the legislature, it'll be great, provided we have Wi-Fi and everything working in the meeting. All right, don't see Councilman Reeves, we're gonna move on, Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
All right, that has passed and I will now just hear closing comments, starting with District One, Councilwoman Rawell.
I too want to thank the staff, I think the presentation gave me the, the level of detail and my follow-up questions, so thank you for the work that you did on that. And I'm looking forward to the final book that we typically have that has a lot more detail, which for the benefit of the public, that comes after we adopt the budget, so. And that's historically been the case.
Councilwoman Gomes? Yes, yes, announcements, all of that. What's that going on? I got you, Councilwoman Gomes.
Okay. One of the things too, I do want to thank staff, you have done an excellent job keeping us informed and meeting with us, with our questions, so kudos to you, Ms. Karen Slaton-Dixon. I know we are not the easiest, but you have done an outstanding job and been very professional, so thank you. I also want to mention that we will be having our annual gun buyback on October fifteenth and we will also be doing a senior safety summit on October the twenty-seventh, that the month of October, of course, is breast cancer month, but it's also Public Safety Awareness Month, so I do encourage you all to come out. Also too, I want residents, especially with the pedestrian safety fund, to make sure that they're exploring other options in regards to traffic calming. Speaking with the chief today in regards to speed bumps, a lot of, even with our police department, a lot of accidents are caused by speed bumps trying to slow these people down. So I want people to really realistically look at other traffic calming mechanisms, whether it's speed tables, I am a fan more of speed tables versus speed bumps because again, you're, you're slowing traffic down and things of that nature. So I know once we get through this process, you will probably get negative feedback from our fire and police because they are more about saving lives and reducing the number of accidents. So I do want to encourage your HOAs and other residents that are looking forward to some type of traffic calming to consider other options than speed bumps. And they're very noisy, so I don't want them in front of my house, I don't know about anybody else, but either way, they're a lot. So I just wanted to say that from my call with, you know, Public Safety Today in regards to speed bumps. And that's it.
Thank you, Councilwoman Willis, and we're probably gonna turn our sound off, so you may not hear us, but we will hear you.
There is so much technical difficulty with us that are working and, and trying to talk virtually, I would just like to.
All right, thank you, Councilwoman Willis. Councilman Sebastian?
Okay, Ms. Mayor, first of all, I too want to thank staff. It's my first time through the process and I did give hopefully some fresh eyes feedback that we can take into consideration for the next go-around. And, you know, I, I know I've had my issues with the District Four systems getting those up and down, so I know you guys have had to be kind of tackling that as we go. So just want to thank you guys for the extra effort. I also, I also hear the concerns of folks who, you know, talked about, you know, trying to save someone on the mileage rate. I, I know I met with staff and got some of their information and so while I'm not completely happy that we weren't able to do anything this year, I'm certainly hoping that we can get, get over some of the economic woes and some of the uncertainty that we have to account for in our budget this year and hopefully looking towards twenty-three where I think we can give something back to our citizens. In terms of activities for District Four announcements, this Saturday, we are having our Fall Festival at Wilkerson, Wilkerson Mill Park, so I invite everyone to come out. And we have some nice things planned and, and so just want the general public to know that they're free to come out and see what's happening in the Green District. Also, watch out for the Atlanta Sling Festival, that's gonna be at Wilkerson Mill Park as well, that's the slingshot, Sling Fest Atlanta, and that's gonna be on the twenty-ninth of October. And also look out for additional vaccination and fire safety programs that are coming as well within the next six weeks in District Four. Thank you, thanks to the public that are coming and voiced their opinions on even the budget this season, all those who have participated across all three of these meetings. Thank you all.
Thank you, Councilman Sebastian. Councilman Reeves? Okay, Councilwoman Williams?
I have no comments.
Okay. Thank you, I have, I have a few comments. I'm gonna start by reading this quote from James Baldwin. He says, "I love America more than any other country in the world, and exactly for this reason, I insist on the right to criticize her perpetually." I, I've said this many times and I just think that it's worth saying again that our, all debate is not dysfunction. We are a five-year-old democracy and I too want to thank our staff, I think that you have done an excellent job, though many of us have criticisms, please don't confuse our criticism with thinking that we think the city is poorly run. I, I understand that some people do have that opinion and that is their opinion, but I think we, we pour through these budgets and these documents and we criticize because we love this place. As someone who was born and raised here forty-six years ago, next month, I was actually born in Atlanta at Piedmont Hospital in Buckhead, and I will say that Atlanta has been a majority black and a black-run city with black mayors and city council people for fifty years until two thousand and twenty, and I think they've done an excellent job. They have attracted the Olympics, they've diversified now, but they are, they still have a sizable black population and, and a black mayor, lots of black people in their city hall, and I think it's, I think it's a city that's well-run. And I think that our city is pretty well-run as also. I do want to make a few announcements. This Friday, we have a free reading of American Skin, you may have seen that Emmy award-winning movie, we have a free, it was based on a play, so if you would like to see the play it's based on, there's a free reading Friday at seven at Southwest Arts Center. Saturday, there is another Green Festival happening in addition to Wilkerson Mill, so go to Wilkerson Mill, which is, Mr. Sebastian was just sending me that, from three to seven. From four to seven, there is a Green Fest featuring kidpreneurs, so it's mostly children, entrepreneurs, they're gonna be talking about agriculture, it's going to be led by Ms. Kendall Ray, Georgia's youngest certified farmer in history. And then on Sunday from twelve to five, it is Sunday, Travis Barber and Blessed One are going to be having a special father-son mentorship and fishing program at the Berrykind Ranch at six three seven five East Stubbs Road, which is right around the corner from Clifton Dale, UMC and Fire Station Number Three in District Four. So, Mr. Sebastian, you'll be seeing a lot of me this weekend. Lastly, I want to say that behind all of these numbers are real people. And our deputy chief, and I, and I've spoken with him about this, and so, you know, he said that I could speak about this, but our, our deputy chief, our deputy fire chief, Pat Wilson, is, is facing a huge trial with his son, Mark. Many of you may have seen and heard about this in the media. I just want to let you know, Chief Wilson, I believe that we are going to be having Mark's red velvet cake very soon, in less than ten years. But however long it takes, your entire fire department, your mayor, and all of the city of South Fulton will be with you every step of the way. Thank you all so much for coming, South Fulton, forever.
Mayor, there was a correction. Councilman Sebastian indicated that the Fall Festival is from two to seven and not three to seven, so it starts at two. Starts at two, so you can make the Wilkerson Mill Fall Festival at two, then come over to Southwest Arts Center at four. We're gonna remind people to get a flu shot, there's also another, there's also another COVID vaccine out, they put all the new stuff in there, get that, get your monkeypox shot if you can get that, I just had my second one this week. Get all your shots.
October the fifteenth, as a matter of fact, we're all precinct.
All right, thank you so much, and with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Moved and seconded. Roll call vote, let's just do hands, we'll do hands and we can see, put your hands up in the queue. All right. Thank you so much, we're adjourned, yes.